Hey, Mr. President.
Thank you. I call the order of the July 2020 meeting of the Media Borough Council. Before we begin, I offer an observation that we are united in a common cause to protect each other. So please, when you're outside, mask up. We have several housekeeping matters to attend to. First is the approval of two sets of meeting minutes. This past week, we had a public hearing concerning the transfer of a liquor license. Of course, there was meeting minutes concerning that. Do I hear a motion to approve those meetings as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Unless there's any discussion, do not see a call for discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the June 18, 2020 public hearing minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. For those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number two is our meeting minutes from a workshop of last week. Do I motion to approve those meeting minutes as submitted?
So moved.
I'll take that for the second. All right. Any call for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the council meeting minutes for this past workshop? I'm sorry, for, I apologize, for our meeting, our council meeting of last month, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, but I can't vote because I'm, they seconded, they, they, you said it was the workshop minutes that they were approving, and then you changed it at the last minute. So I don't feel comfortable saying aye.
Sure.
Because I don't know who I'm voting for.
So let's do a redo. Do I motion to approve the council meeting minutes for the month of June 2020?
Second.
And do I hear a first?
Yes, so, I, so moved.
The motion's been made and it hasn't been seconded for any discussion. Here we no call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the June 2020 council meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. As another housekeeping matter, last, last week before our workshop meeting, we had, we held executive session, during which we discussed a property matter as well as a personnel matter. As always, if you wish to offer your thoughts or have any questions, you may do so. There are two ways that you may do so. The first is via email. The email address is comments@mediaborough.com. That's comments@mediaborough.com, or by phone. The number is 610-566-5210, extension is 243. I'll repeat that, 610-566-5210, extension 243. We have public comment both now as well as at the end of the, toward the, toward the end of the agenda. Karen Rapinoe is with us this evening, and Karen, you have told us before the start of the meeting that you have received some comments from, of, comments as well as questions. And could you tell us what they are?
Okay. First one's from Michael Straw, 499 West Jefferson Street. He's requesting that the comments submitted by Media Borough residents to Borough Council during the July 9th workshop meeting regarding Sergeant Carroll be read into the record. Additionally, I have four comments regarding the police matter regarding Sergeant Carroll. No addresses provided with the exception of Diane Woody of 8, of West Third Street. And she would like it to know, you know, that she wants to be counted in opposition to Sergeant Carroll's termination. I have another one regarding the police budget, no address. And another one regarding the Sunoco pipeline from Linda Healy, West Second Street. I believe you all received a copy of this comment in your email this morning. And she is asking how we're planning to enforce our property rights at that location.
Okay, well, we'll try to take these in, in the order that they were delivered to us by Karen. As to the request that the comments concerning disciplinary action that council took with regard to Sergeant Carroll, we have made all of those comments available as attachments to the council meeting minutes. So they will be available. They will be part of the official meeting minutes for that, that meeting. They are voluminous, so it is at best impractical to read them now. It would take us quite a long time to do so. And Karen, I, I request that the other comments that we have received in connection with today's meeting, that they be attached to the meeting minutes, the official meeting minutes for tonight's meeting. We had a question about the police budget. Karen, could you, could you read us the question?
Yes. I'm running to express my displeasure and frustration regarding the media police budget of 3.8 million. Money should be used to invest in opportunities for under-resourced communities and media and provide opportunities for community members through actions such as investing in the youth center, improving parks and playgrounds, and funding summer camps. No, it's from Peter Sisson, no address.
All right. So we do not know if that is a borough resident. So then the last item, I think you mentioned, was a question concerning Sunoco Pipeline.
Correct.
Could you read us what the question is?
Please verify, please verify that council members are familiar with the location of the easement. And she references Media's Sunoco easement public, oh, not public, Sunoco easement at Turnbridge, and the dangers of continued work to the community environment. Again, how is Media Borough Council planning to enforce our property rights?
Well, I think we are all aware that the property is along Route 452, just north of, there's a Barnaby's pub on the west side of the street, so that's where it's located. The, as to enforcing liquor rights, I'm not sure what is being asked. Recently, council was requested by Sunoco to accept money for an expansion of easement at that property. And Borough Council declined that offer. In fact, we were sent a check and we sent it back. But I'm not quite sure what else the question is asking. But Linda, you know how to get ahold of me. I apologize, I wasn't able to get to you today because it was a very busy day to me, day for me. So if you can contact me and I'll, I'll do my best to work through that with you. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would it be all right for me as the finance chair to address the question on the police budget? Because although we don't know where it came from, many of our citizens might be wondering or might want us to react. So I'd be happy to do that.
That's fair. Please do.
Thank you. It is true that the police budget is the single largest aspect of Media Borough's budget. But I would argue that their, their, the expense is well worth it. The foundation of media's success is safety as a community. And that affects everything that happens here. So we, we have a very good community. We, we've had professional, we've been doing a lot of time. Most of the expenses that come with the police force are contractual. There's not a lot of flexibility that we have to control those costs because we have 16 highly-paid professionals who are, who are union members. So it, it does cost a lot, but I would argue, and I think most of my fellow council members would agree with me, that it has been, continues to be worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williamson. We'll then move into the council items. Because of the nature that we are presenting tonight's meeting, which is by Zoom, YouTube, we do things a little bit differently than we did pre-print pandemic. Rather than going through individual agendas, I have been tasked with presenting all of the motions. We have found that that makes things move a little bit more smoothly as opposed to switching from person to person. And sometimes we forget to turn on microphones. Item number one, under our council items, is a resolution. It is with regard to disposition of property. Occasionally, the borough has property items that we no longer need or no longer, or have outlived their usefulness. But we can't just toss them away. They're public property. So we have to dispose of property in this formal fashion. In this case, we are talking about several hundred meter poles, considerable number of meter heads, office chairs, printers, desk phones, et cetera. So I move that we ratify Resolution 2020-35, which will allow disposition of this property.
Second a motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number two is ratification of an action we took last week. It will make parking on our, the Olive Street parking lot free for all through the end of this month. The idea behind this is that it will encourage more persons to come into town, attend our restaurants, go to the shops. And this would allow easier access into the town. So we took a sense of counsel last week, and the sense was in favor of rat, of a free parking at the parking garage through the end of the month. So I make a motion that we ratify that the sense of counsel we took last week, which will permit free parking on the Olive Street parking garage through the end of this month.
Second a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number three, again, is ratifying a sense of counsel that was taken last week. This is with regard to the Media's farmers market. The Media's farmers market is back to the Edgemont Street location where it was until this, this past March. It was closed for a number of weeks because of the pandemic, and it opened for several weeks at the Friends Meeting House over on Providence Road. They have asked to return to Edgemont Street as they were before. And the sense of counsel was that we would permit the return. In fact, they, they have been at that location for the past two Sunday. So tonight, I ask that we ratify that sense of counsel we took permitting the Media's farmers market. We held every Sunday, July through November, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Edgemont Street location. That's between, that's between State Street and Front Street.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number four is resignation of a member of the Media Business Authority from that body. His name is David Sibley. He's looking to resign from the MBA, not because he is disenchanted with that position or he wishes to leave us, but because he is assuming another position of, of responsibility with the MBA, and he cannot serve in both those positions at the same time. So he has done what is appropriate. He has tendered his resignation as a board member of the MBA. And I make it a form of a motion that we accept his resignation. His term expires December 31, 2021.
Second a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Just one question. Because I believe Mr. Sibley is actively employed currently with the MBA, I'd like to know the date upon which this is effective. This is a retroactive approval.
Councilman Williamson, you've cut out there. I don't know if others had difficulty hearing you, but I was unable to hear you pull it.
I couldn't hear.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'll try again. Can you hear me this time?
We can.
Okay. The, I believe Mr. Sibley is currently employed by the MBA, helping with the street closures, closures, et cetera. So I, I would like this to be retroactive perhaps to at least a month ago to reflect the current situation. It appears that we're accepting something that is a fait accompli.
And I'll accept, I'll amend my motion to include that, that this will be retroactive to the point at which he began working in that paid position. Is there a, is there a second on that amended motion?
Yes, second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing no call for further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the resignation of David Sibley from the Media Business Authority, retroactive to the date on which he started a paid position with the MBA, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number five, I, touches upon an item that we've been talking about for several months. But unfortunately, for the past four months, we were not able to discuss it in our normal committee structure because of the pandemic and of the local government's response to the pandemic. Many of our committee meetings were canceled. The chief concern we had, aside from the public health issue, was that the, the public would not be able to participate in a meaningful way in electronic meetings such as this. So many of these issues that were pending in March have just been sitting there, waiting for the moment when we can talk about them again. This is a moratorium on the keeping of chicken or fowl as household pets within the Borough of Media. We had passed a moratorium that began at the end of January of this year and extended to the end of this month. The idea was that during those intervening months, we would have the opportunity to discuss amending our ordinance about the keeping of chickens and other fowl in the Borough of Media, but we were unable to do so because of the effect of the pandemic. What this, oh, what the proposed, tonight's ordinance would do would be to extend the moratorium essentially for this, the same period of time being lost, four months through to the end of this November. So I move that we pass ordinance number 1140 of 2020, which would extend the moratorium prohibiting the keeping of chickens or fowl as household pets or otherwise within the Borough of Media from August 1 through the end of November of this year.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. I should mention that those persons who are keeping chickens or fowl in the Borough of Media before the start of the moratorium this past January, they are grandfathers, so they are permitted to continue keeping them. But, and we will continue working on this as soon as we are able to meet safely in our committees. Item number six, it's a resolution of 2020-36, issuance of procurement cards. We happen to have with us tonight Jim Seaman, and Jim has been really the, the person who has pushed this along on the Borough end. I asked him before the start of this meeting if he was prepared to, to talk to us about this so the public understands better what these procurement cards do, and he said that he would be happy to do so. So Jim, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quite simply, the P card is a credit card, an affinity card, if you will, and it's going to provide us two things. Number one, it'll provide us a cash back incentive depending on the amount of spend. So it'll provide revenue for the borough. And two, it'll make us more efficient by cutting down the, the, the cutting of hundreds of checks each month. So instead of cutting checks for every invoice, we'll be able to put them on the, on the P card. Will, the, the bank will take the money out of, out of our account, so we won't even cut a check to the credit card company. And then we'll be able to process that information and we'll get cash back for the spend. So it'll, it'll be very efficient for finance in helping us streamline the way we do business.
So if I understand you correctly, we get cash back and it's more efficient?
Correct.
So what's in our wallet?
That's it.
Okay. I'll make that in the form of a motion. All those, in, that, I, I move that we adopt Resolution 2020-36, which will allow the issuance of procurement cards for certain persons at the borough to use. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I need to abstain from the vote. I am an employee of Public Financial Management, which is the asset manager for the Pliget Trust in which the card is coming from.
All right. Those, those members who have not abstained, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. It's unanimous vote with one abstention, and the abstention is Councilman Williamson. Item number seven is ratification of the payment of the borough's bills for this past month. They are in the, in the following amounts to the following funds, from the following funds. The general fund, $189,032.76. The recreation fund, $63.48. The capital fund, $38,415.73. No money's paid out of the liquid fuel fund, for a total of $377,511, I'm sorry, $377,511.97. I move that we ratify the payment of the June 2020 bills.
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning the motion?
Just realize, Mr. President, that some of your speaking cut out there, but the numbers are clearly in the record, so all of us are comfortable, even though we couldn't quite hear you all the time.
For those at home who are not able to hear, the, the bills total $377,511.97, roughly equally divided between capital fund and general fund expenditures with a very modest amount to the recreation fund, $63.48. All right. All those in favor of payment of the June bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is something of a bittersweet motion. It's the appointment of Jim Seaman, whom we just heard, as interim borough manager and borough secretary. As many of you know, as of tomorrow, Jeff Smith, our longtime borough manager, will be leaving that position and moving with his family out of state. And of course, we wish him well. He has done enormous good for our community over the past 20 years. And I'm sure that he will do enormous good in his new community as well. We will miss him. We will miss his, his constant devotion to the Borough of Media and the people who live here. But one of his legacies is that he has left behind a very talented bench of, of others who will be able to stand up and, oh, help the borough through the next few months as we look for a new borough manager. One of those is Jim Seaman, who among other things was the spearheaded our parking kiosk, which was an enormous, enormously complicated undertaking, but he made it seem simple. So we're, we have decided, or we were seeking to decide tonight, whether or not to appoint Jim as the interim borough manager and secretary while we look for a new borough manager. I make it in the form of a motion that we do appoint him to that interim position.
I'll second that motion.
Paul, lead me to it. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? I'll only add this, just so that's explicit, that he will assume that position as of, of, of end of workday tomorrow. All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Jim Seaman as interim borough secretary, borough manager and secretary as of tomorrow, end of day, workday tomorrow, July 17, 2020, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. The related motions, oh, we are, we need to have a new open records officer. We're required to do so by state law. Whenever somebody makes a right-to-no request to the borough, the open, the borough's open records officer is the one who receives it and processes it. We're required to have such a person. Jeff Smith currently is that person, but as of end of workday tomorrow, he would no longer be. So we are seeking to formalize the appointment of Karen Rapinoe as our open records officer, and I make it in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Karen Rapinoe as the borough's open records officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President, might, might I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to personally thank Jeff for the opportunity and for all that he's provided in a short period of time I've been here. His leadership and vision of what we needed to do, none of what we've done would have been accomplished without that. And I want to thank him for, for, he's been a tremendous, tremendous leader in, in just the short time I've been here.
There's no doubt that you have big shoes to fill. But as I mentioned before, part of Jeff's legacy is that he has found excellent capable persons to do, to do the borough's work. And Jim, I think that you've just received a vote of confidence from Borough Council that you are indeed someone that we consider capable to do that work. So welcome on board to those positions.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Williamson.
I just want, I, I think that probably every single member of council would love to speak at length about how important Jeff Smith has been to, to them and to the borough, but we can't in this format. I'm glad that Jim said something. He indicates that, like, the little bit of how important Jeff Smith has been for all of us. So that's all. I, I, I didn't know that it was going to be an opportunity to speak at length about how important and wonderful he has been, but Jim.
There are two persons whose contributions to the borough are inestimable. Jeff Smith as well as Ralph DeRosa. Ralph will be leaving us at the end of the month. After 47 years, finally got tired of us, I suppose. But because of this format, it is very difficult.
As you break up.
Yeah.
For, I said, I apologize, but because of this format, it's very, very difficult for, it's very difficult for us to express in a meaningful way what a debt we owe to both Jeff Smith and to Ralph DeRosa. I am hopeful that once things trend a little bit back, back towards normalcy. I am hopeful that once things trend a little bit ma- back, uh, towards normalcy, that we'll have the opportunity to do that in a more formal way.
Yes.
It's, it's imperative, Mr. President.
I agree. I agree. Um, Councilman Williamson, uh, i- is there another motion that, uh, you are expecting that we would be making tonight? With regard to, uh, mass gathering?
Well, I, I, I will be happy to, though I will apologize beforehand to my council members who may not have seen the email I sent you just prior to the meeting.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, Sarah, I will explain it and, and my deepest apologies. At the workshop last week, which normally, normally we have two weeks between the workshop and the council meeting. This was unusual because of the holiday. The M B A brought to us a proposal to close the streets on Thursday night instead of Sunday, in addition to Wednesday. And I, I admit that I was one of the council people most concerned about that for a variety of-
You're, you're disappearing.
I'm not. You can't hear me, Sarah?
It keeps fading in and out.
Yeah.
You're back.
You're fading in and out for everybody.
I'm not sure what to do.
Maybe.
That, that works, Peter.
Peter, sometimes taking yourself off of self-view helps.
Off of self-view?
Off of, um, you hide self-view.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to take myself off video because I know that helps sometimes too. Can you hear?
That's.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, well, I had an opportunity to talk to some of the M B A members since then, and I think that, um, a modified proposal from what we heard from them last time might, would, would be acceptable to me, and I want an opportunity for you all to consider it. Um, and that is that Thursday would not be closed today, except for those occasions when Wednesday was rained out. I think the M B A officials made a, a fair point to me that there's a considerable amount of logistics involved in, uh, providing the necessary extra food and tables and, and staff and so forth for this, uh, occasion, and if they can't do Wednesday, they'd like to be able to do food. Uh, that would be, the problem may, if the other business owners would be that the, as the M B A, said that they would do, they would provide exclusive parking for those other businesses in town that needed that same time period, essentially five to 8 p.m., principally being lawns and, and nail salons, hair and nail salons. They would provide that parking either at the theater or at the Olive Street parking lot. They would manage it so that it would be exclusive for those people they have agreed to staff it. The last item would be either night, they would start at 5 instead of 4 p.m. I believe that those were the three conditions I sent you that would be in addition to, would essentially modify the mass gathering permit that was submitted by the M B A and that we reviewed last week. And I'm sorry that we, uh, because of the pandemic, we don't get a chance to discuss the person, but, um, it was a little too you this evening, and because of the situation where we only move once in a while and the business community desperate for every opportunity they have, they tend to have to make a little bit of money, I ask your indulgence to consider this this evening.
So the, the, um-
But Sarah, why don't we make sure that we have a motion and then we can, we can talk about it.
That's what I want to know what it is. What does it say now?
Modify the mass gathering permit presented to us by the M B A last week with the conditions I just specified.
That specify. List them again, please.
Okay. Thursday is only available if Wednesday of that week is rained out.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, they will not open, oh, this is something, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention. They will not open, uh, the block where Aziz, 320, and Sherry Punjab are, because none of those businesses want that block closed. Um, they've agreed to that, and the last condition was that they would start at 5 p.m. instead of 4.
And I think, Peter, you mentioned as well that they would, uh, um, monitor parking.
Yes, yes. That was the other condition. I'm, I'm so sorry. Didn't mention it in my wrap-up in time.
All right, and you, and you're making that in the form of a motion?
I am.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, just clarification. So is it, if it rains on Wednesday, it's only Thursday? Or is it Wednesday and Thursday?
Just one day a week.
Okay.
Any other?
And what about the part that says the block that, one block is going to be closed?
Not closed.
Open.
The last, the western blocks there where Sherry Punjab, Aziz, 320 are, those,
Uh huh.
That, the restaurants in that block do not want the street closed, so the M B A will not close that street, that block.
Okay. Okay.
Peter?
Yes.
Do you, are you aware that the other blocks are all in agreement with regards to the closures? I mean, we're, it sounds like the M B A is keeping open State Street from, from Veteran Square to Orange because that's what the restaurants and retailers desire. Is it the rest of the blocks that the restaurants and retailers do have the desire to close down?
That is the representation that has been made to me by the official represent, resident representatives at the M B A, and they, they base that on, uh, what they characterized as a personal, uh, interviewing of the businesses on those blocks.
Okay.
Uh, can I throw something in there? Um, Punji Job was open last night. They were on the, on the street, and I think there was one other restaurant down there, so, uh, you may want to check on that, uh, but, uh, they were open.
Well.
Serving, so they may want to keep that block open.
Uh, so, Miss, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, what was represented by the M B A, uh, this, late this, this morning, but, so.
One of those people just called me to make sure I brought this up.
Sorry, didn't hear you.
I said, one of the people just called me to remind me to bring that up.
Remind you.
People you met with this morning said that Punji Job was open and they want to be, they want to have the option to be open.
So we're back to square around again, where the M B A really doesn't know what the people want.
May, Bob, can you, can you clarify? They want the street to be open or they want to serve on the street?
Um, my source here, um, tells me that they want the option to be able to come out on, uh, Wednesday night. At least one of those three, there.
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for muddying what could have been a very clear presentation. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Uh, I, I, I saw they were open last night. He just called to confirm.
My, my, my motion remains the same.
Okay.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Are there any other call for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the amended mass gathering, uh, application as outlined by Councilman Williamson, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay. And, Mr. President, I, I, I was, 15 seconds ago, was ready to listen to what Peter had to say because I felt Peter probably got some good information. Uh, it's quite obvious that the M B A still does not know what the restaurants and retailers want, and that is why I had, felt that I had to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Um, it, it is unclear to me because of the technology what the actual vote is. I know that we have one vote against from Councilman Robinson.
I'm also voting no.
Okay, for at least-
I think it's a two-five, Ryan.
Okay. Uh, does, did anybody else vote no?
I didn't vote.
Then the motion passes five to two. Um, before we get to the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting, uh, a reminder that there is an opening on the Planning Commission. If you are interested, please, uh, get in your letter of interest directed to Jim Seaman at the Borough Hall. It can be, simply be a quick statement of your interest, although it would be helpful if you give some idea of your background. Most persons who are interested in a position like this will include something of a resume or a quick bio sketch so that, uh, uh, the members of the Planning Commission have a better understanding of your background, but, uh, it is a wonderful opportunity to get involved in a very consequential, uh, uh, volunteer group in the Borough. Um, there, I think that all members of council receive a petition, uh, that was titled Make Media Sidewalk Safe for Residents Now. And specifically, the signers of this petition mentioned a concern about the, the state of Plum Street Mall. They weren't specific about other areas in the Borough, but they did mention that, uh, a concern for sidewalks throughout the Borough. Um, under the law, the Borough is responsible for the sidewalks, uh, that are outside of borough, properties the Borough owns. The other sidewalks throughout the Borough, the vast majority of the sidewalks throughout the Borough, uh, the chief, the primary responsibility for upkeep of those sidewalks is with the property owner. I do know that, uh, our code enforcement officer regularly walks throughout town to identify areas where the sidewalks are in need of some attention. Uh, but, uh, it could very well be that there are some areas that were not noticed before or that have developed more recently. If you, as a resident or visitor to media, have concern about a specific area, please let us know. Uh, we can certainly take a look at it and, uh, determine whether or not something needs to be, uh, needs to be addressed, whether by us because it's, uh, our sidewalk or by the, uh, the owner of the pro- or by the owner of the property. Um, but I think it's probably worthwhile for us to at least take a look at the Plum Street Mall. I have heard a number of concerns about, uh, the state of the Plum Street Mall and the bricking there. Uh, Paul, is that something that you can get public works to go on and take a look at and, and make sure that they're confident that, uh, it's in good shape, or if it needs some, some attention, we can do that?
I'll be glad to get public works as well as code enforcement down to take a look.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, and again, for, uh, those who are with us tonight and, uh, they have a concern about an area of sidewalk anywhere in the Borough of Media, just let us know. It, it might not be our sidewalk, but, uh, if I bring it to our attention, there may, might be a way that we can help facilitate repair of sidewalk.
Mr. President?
Yes. Uh, Borough Engineer Kevin Manson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to let you know, the Borough Manager, Jeff Smith, did authorize me to prepare an overall maintenance, uh, contract for Borough-owned sidewalk areas, including areas like Plum Street Mall. Uh, I anticipated that having had a bid earlier this year with COVID, there were a number of things that got shifted around, but I will reprioritize it so that we have, uh, a contractor available that can go out and do repairs as needed. I believe we put money in the budget for these sort of things, uh, but some of those repairs were a little bit outside the comfort zone of our, of our existing public works crews, but I did want to let you know that it's on my plate to develop a maintenance contract.
Thank you, Mr. Manson. Um, now we got, right, the second opportunity for members of the public to, uh, comment, ask this question. Karen Rapinoe, have we received any new emails or telephone calls concerning, uh, uh, items that, uh, residents, visitors to Borough of Media, uh, want us to address?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Okay. Um, then, uh, before we, before we adjourn for the evening, um, I will announce that we will have executive session tonight. It looks as if there are two litigation matters and potentially a personnel matter that we will be discussing. Uh, I will move that we adjourn it this time into executive session. We do not need a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes. Good night, folks. We hope to see you again next month.
Mr. Smith, we're going to miss you.
We will indeed.
Hey, Jeff.
Good luck, Jeff.
Good luck, Jeff. Good luck.
Good luck. So now, do we go to another phone?